The Committee on Public Safety, Infrastructure and Maritime Transportation calls this public hearing to order. It is now... 2:01 PM. Present with me today is Senator Frank Uggan. And I'm sure other senators will be showing up. Senator Morrison, thank you for joining us. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive testimony on a bill 283, which is an act to approve and adopt the Jose de Leon Guerrero Commercial Port of Guam Master Plan Update 2013 Report. Now, I just want to put a few facts into the record, just to clarify certain things. On February 21st, the legislature received the governor's transmission of the master plan update 2013 report. And the transmission was accompanied by an electronic version of the document. Upon reviewing the transmission, the electronic version, the committee found that both the electronic submission and the hard copy of the plan submitted had pages missing. On March 6th, the Bureau of Statistics and Plans transmitted a corrected electronic version of the master plan update to the legislature. And to the best of the committee's knowledge, the March 6th, 2014 submission is complete unless it is informed otherwise. Therefore, the original attachment to bill 283 will be replaced by a printed version of the March 6th electronic submission from the Bureau of Statistics and Plans. And I have, for the senators here, there was 47 pages that were missing. Some of them were blank pages, some of them were actual pages. But all that is reconciled now, and we got it, I think we have a complete version. Notice of this public hearing was provided to senators, stakeholders, and the local media, meeting the requirements of the open government law. This public hearing is also being broadcast on local television, MCB Channel 13, GTA Channel 21. And so, there are people that are watching on TV. So I would ask that whoever's making the presentations speak into the mic so that those who are watching on TV will be able to get the benefit of the hearing. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 5:00 PM on Friday, March 21st, 2014. Please address testimony to Senator Thomas C. Ada, Chairperson, Committee on Public Safety, Infrastructure and Maritime Transportation. We'll go ahead and we'll start the hearing now. And the format that we'll follow is I did ask the port to provide their presentation and to limit it to no more than 45 minutes. And then we'll follow that with if there's anybody in the general public who wants to provide testimony, certainly they'll be welcome to provide their testimony. And then I will open it up to the senators to ask whatever questions they may have of the port to clarify the presentation that was made. So with that, Ms. Brown, if you want to go ahead and make any opening remarks, bring whoever you want to this...
Thank you very much Senator Ada for the opportunity today for the members of the Port Authority family to provide the Guam Legislature and the general public an update on the 2013 master plan. As you know, originally, the master plan for the port was created back in 2007. And during that time, the climate of the anticipated buildup certainly set the framework for the 2007 plan. But as we know, many changes have happened since that time. And this particular report and update is a reflection of the reality of where we are today in terms of still upgrades and improvements that need to be made to the port in terms of our organic growth and our inherent needs. And then, of course, other issues that will accommodate to a certain degree any additional capacity that's needed at the Port Authority of Guam. Our respective staff members will be up here to provide the general overview and presentation. And our chief planner, Dot Harris, will be the one to do that. Before I continue, I certainly want to introduce the members of the management team at the Port Authority. And to my right, as you may know, is Maria Titino. She is our deputy for finance and administration. And to my left is Felix Pangolin, who's a deputy for operations. So with that, we'll turn it over to Dot to begin the process. And then our other key staff will be presenting certain sections of the master plan. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. We'll start off with the agenda on what we will be discussing in the slides to follow. This includes the intent of the 2013 master plan update. The assumption is that the prior master plan was developed in 2007. We'll discuss also the reset by the Department of Defense in 2013, I mean, 2011, excuse me, and the impacts of that. And how we, as a port, at the port, have reset our objectives as well in response to the reset with a balanced approach. The 2013 master plan CIP schedule and recommendations will also be discussed, as well as financing and funding options. And finally, the next steps, which include the five-year tariff petition. The intent of the new master plan is to update the content and direction of the port modernization program initiated by the 2007 report. The redirected port modernization plan and implementation strategy will do the following. And the following is basically a list of the four major goals that are identified and that we will be implementing. And this includes, number one, modernize the port in five years. And the master plan covers five years but also has a 20-year threshold for the entire process. Number two, prepare for scaled-down projections targeting organic growth. The master plan also takes into consideration the reset growth as well as the 2007 massive growth that was originally predicted. But our projections, particularly in terms of financing and funding, will be looking primarily at organic growth. And we'll discuss this further in the presentation. Number three, the third major goal is to provide a balanced focus on improvement and long-term sustainability. And finally, provide a strategy to secure financial self-sufficiency to fund the recommendations in the master plan update. What the assumptions were in the prior master plan in 2007, this called, they had called for, we were, the strategy was in response to the announcement by TOD for a $10 billion military realignment plan. The relocation of 8,600 Marines and 9,000 dependents. That construction would occur between 2010 and 2014. And at its peak, Guam's overall population would climb as high as a quarter of a million. And also, the 2007 master plan proposed projects were over $200 million in capital improvements. And these also were to have been executed between 2009 and 2014. The new assumptions are based on the 2011 TOD reset impacts. The reset calls for $8.6 billion in $20,000 for their construction budget, 5,000 Marines, one-third of them will be permanent, the other two-thirds will be rotational, 1,300 dependents. And the TOD implementation timeframe has been pushed back to 2016 through 2020. This graph shows how the $10 billion would have been spent over the previous timeframe. Okay, starting with the break bulk cargo and then peaking in 2011 and then subsiding at the end of 2014. And that obviously has changed. This graph shows the new projections. The tan line on the bottom illustrates organic growth. And over the 20-year period, we're looking at roughly about 1%. The master plan also takes into consideration midterm growth, which is the reset volumes provided by the Department of Defense. And you can see that it basically peaks out, this is for container rights cargo, by the way, and it peaks out at about 2022. And for purposes of comparison, also, the original volumes by the, that the 2007 master plan was based on are also included for purposes of comparison. This is, this talks about the same trends, but how it would impact on our break bulk cargo forecast. Again, looking at organic growth, the mid-growth projections based on the revised TOD projections and then the original level of impact from 2007. At this point, I will turn the presentation over to Mr. John Sontas, our operations manager, to discuss what we're, where we are right now. Oh, there we go, John. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, my name is John Sontas, I'm the operations manager. What we see on this slide are two split panes, the top being the full military buildup and then the bottom being the reset, the $50 million TOD grant money, which is the Guam Modernization Program or the Guam Initiative for Improvement Project or Program. The three phases I'll be going into for this program would include the CFS, the first phase, the break bulk section, which is the second phase. The third phase... Must be my... It's just me? It's not Happy Hour, it's not yet Happy Hour. The third phase being outside, the expanded yard. The overall project on the top included outside of the perimeter of the terminal to include within the terminal. Currently, the $50 million project I'll be presenting does not include anything within the current footprint in the terminal. Next slide, please. The first phase was the CFS, which has been completed. It's called CFS, which is the Container Freight Station. We had to renovate this one large building. As you can see, we enclosed all the container freight doors with CMU blocks and glass blocks, which provides actual natural lighting. Also included, the construction of three, two here and one on the other side, on the backside, for three large roll-up doors for the receiving and issuing of, and storage of loose cargo, break bulk cargo. On the right side, longshore offices includes transportation, stewarding. You have your lounge room, which is for safety briefings, for training, our dispatch offices. This program, this phase was completed last month, February, but due to the power situation where LC3 saw power lines burn, we won't be able to move in until that's been completed. But the overall phase for this one here is actually done. Pro Pacific was a contractor, it was at a cost of $899,000. It provides us nine acres of open space, I mean, I'm sorry, 7,200 square feet of single-story office for our employees. That provides a secure laydown area for our loose cargo, those cargoes that are not in containers. Next slide, please. Here shows the inside of the warehouse, this is the open space, which we're already using. And this is the customs cage that's been built. There's our large bay doors. The second phase, the selected demolition and break bulk yard modifications was awarded to Smith Bridge. Project cost is 1.3, we're looking at completing around May of 2014. This includes the demolition of warehouse number two, as you can see right here, which is right in front of F4. Includes demolition of the gas station, the old scale. When this project is completed, it'll provide us nine acres of break bulk area open space, pretty much. The port right now, the way it's been designed, the rower and rower cargoes, the autos that come off the vessels, they have to traverse through Route 11, through the container yard, to get staged outside. Once this project is done, this phase, it'll provide an efficient operation. It's just right off, so now you have two different terminals. You have a break bulk terminal and you have a container terminal. So now you won't have cargoes going out, you won't have cars being staged outside on the Route 11 driving with the commercial vehicles. So this will provide an efficient and safe operation for the break bulk cargo, especially for project cargo. The challenge that we have, next slide, is, as you can see, it's already done, it's down. We're probably almost 90% complete on this project. But as you can see, the fencing right there along the backside and the front side of the waterside, vessels can part, but that has also hampered our capacity. But once this project is done by next month, it'll open up that capacity again, that'll be an efficient operation. To the left on the bottom, you see the old scale that was torn out. It's already been covered up to be used for the vaning and stuffing station. On the right side, you see the old gas station that was torn down. This area, when it would be worked on or be built, what would be built would be a washdown program that'll be on the third phase, next slide. This is the last phase, that's yet to be awarded out. Hopefully, Ronnie put in the notes per se and completion date around 2015. It's an estimated cost of $20 million. This is one of the biggest of the three phases. Phase two, which I just presented, needs to be completed in order for this phase to start. And the reason being is that you see all these vehicles out here. These now will be staged right at the break bulk yard. This includes, this phase includes 4.6 acres expansion, high mass sliding within predetermined areas. It's gonna have a new gate runway. The current gate right here, as you can see, the trucks have to line up out in the middle of Route 11. The new gate trucks should be able to line up within the port's area. At the same time, there's a scale that would assist. We have also oil water separators that'll be installed for outfalls. And then we have, like I mentioned, the new equipment wash rack. The port has purchased in the past all these large and heavy cargo handling equipment. But because we have not yet put in place, our oil water separators are not able to wash any of these equipment within the footprint. So you can imagine our investment being deteriorated as the days and the months go by. So this wash rack is part of that, where the old gas station was torn down, will actually be installed. Upon completion of this program, the GCPI, there would be excess capacity depending on the stacking within the port, how dense we have to go on a container stacking, the break bulk area itself, nine acres, that's a lot of space that we have for both low-low, rower, loose cargo, Neil Bulk, which is rebars, and other such cargoes. Thank you. Turn it back to Dot.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, did you want to recognize your new committee members who've spoken?
Thank you. Joining us also is Senator Chris Duñez, Senator Tony Ada, and Senator Dennis Rodriguez. Thank you, gentlemen, for joining us.
Thank you. I'd also like to recognize one of our board members, Ms. Christine Balleto, who was here. And we'll continue. With this next slide, it looks like a busy slide, but I will go into more detail with the projects that are listed here. But I just wanted to illustrate that the blue, the top, the slides on the top on the blue are related to port modernization. As we do port modernization, we still have to sustain the existing facility. And those projects are identified in the green and the gray. And so, we'll move on to the next slides where I will discuss that in more detail. The first project is the CFS modification. And all these, and these projects on this page are all fall under the TOD grant, which is administered in our partnership with Merit. The CFS building modification, warehouse two, a gas station and missile lighting structures demolition, oil water separators to be installed on existing outfalls, our break bulk yard expansion, new parking stalls for parking displaced by the break bulk expansion, demolition of the crane mechanic area, high and low mass sliding, water and fire systems upgrade. And this is in the first phase. A new container gate area and container yard expansion. Also, under the TOD grant, includes Siemens Club demolition, the installation of a new load center five and a new break bulk terminal gate. These are still related to modernization, but are funded by other sources to include the Port Authority and our other grant funds. This includes upgraded financial management system, the removal of gantry two and the RTGs, our service life extension of wharfs F3 through F6, the installation of a terminal operating system, as well as a gate operating system, the construction of a marine and port security operations center building. This is paid for by, also with a grant by DHS. Installation of a motorized operating valve at both pier fuel pipelines, cargo and vehicle detection screening machine, this is a mobile X-ray machine, and we also receive funding from DHS for that. Container yard storm drain channel repairs, inbound, outbound optical card reader portals and canopies. And now we're moving on to the sustainability projects. And these include compressors for the admin building, air conditioning system, various air conditioning units, parts and supplies, harbor crane parts and supply unit, warehouse one repairs, architectural and engineering services, which will be retained on an IDIQ basis, a new generator, new emergency backup generators, Aggett Marina Dock A repairs, electrical work for an additional 56 reefer outlets and the installation of reefer lights, and loading docks repairs at the Aggett Marina. Moving on with our sustainability projects, this includes also the port police security upgrade, renovations to the harbor of refuge, repair and upgrade of perimeter fencing, and the purchase and demolition of the cranes listed here. This schedule, we will be discussing this later in the presentation, but this is listed as some of the projects under sustainability. And finally, under sustainability, the purchase and replacement of additional yard equipment. These projects also, in this slide, fall under sustainability, but they have yet to be fleshed out, a scope of work developed as well as estimated costs involved with them, but they're listed there as necessary for sustainability. This includes the revitalization of hotel wharf and the access road, the upgrade of the power system for our IT office, Marina sewage pump station upgrades, automatic transfer switches for load center two and load center three, renovations of the high tower, low tower, and the existing gate building, warehouse one renovations, replacement of the admin building, progressive utilities replacement in all terminal yards, a soil stabilization of wharfs F4 through F6, and progressive replacement of perimeter fencing at the container yard. The 2013 master plan objectives represent a strategy for successfully completing and maintaining a sustainable asset. The port master plan projects proposed for 2014 through 2018 will be done before 2016. And this is to ensure that no major construction occurs during the cargo peak. These projects include the port, AmeriDC Guam Commercial Port Improvement Projects, which are undergoing, these are expected to be completed by July of next year. The service life extension work on the wharfs F4 and F6. Recommendations for systems improvements from 2014 through 2018 are to complete the interim financial management system upgrade, the terminal operating system upgrade, and the installation of a new gate operating system. Other recommendations are to initiate sustainability measures in the near term to define and develop additional to-be-determined projects required to maintain the condition of the facilities, as well as continued implementation of the structured maintenance program for the gantry cranes, which has already been initiated, and the structured maintenance program for the terminal yard equipment, again, which is also underway. Additional recommendations falling under the goal of sustainability are to right-size facility maintenance and budget, and repair budgets, secure delegated procurement authority, and establish special accounts for the crane surcharge, which has already been done, the facility maintenance fee, again, this has already been established, and to establish a capital improvement plan account and a yard maintenance equipment account. Recommendations for long-term sustainability projects, again, from years 6 to 20, include inbound and outbound gate complex optical card reader portals, replace the admin building, and progressively replace all underground utilities and pavement in the container yard and expand concrete fencing to replace chain link fencing wherever possible. More recommendations for long-term sustainability projects are to perform concrete repairs to extend the service life of the warehouses, excuse me, provide space utilization adjustments to EQMR and warehouse one and the existing gate admin building and the high and low towers. Also, to replace all port cranes at the end of their service life. So that CB2 would be replaced in year 2027 and the additional two would be replaced in year 2029. So that's basically year 16 and year 18 in the life of those polar cranes. More long-term sustainability projects are to plan for wharf replacement in parallel with the replacement of the gantry cranes and plan to right-size the port salary structure to the 50th market percentile salaries and wages over a period of 10 years. Under the goal of establishing financial self-sufficiency, the recommendations are to initiate and follow through with the following measures. Number one, implement a five-year annual tariff increase to fund the port modernization plan and near-term sustainability projects and initiatives. Plan for the annual tariff increases after the initial five-year schedule to keep pace with inflation. And continuously monitor cargo volumes, compare them with demand forecast scenarios, and make financial and planning adjustments as applicable, again, based on the data. So this will be a continuous monitoring program to ensure that we are, our financials are in line with the projections based on the data available. Additional financial self-sufficiency measures are that every five years, it is recommended that PAG review progress at the port modernization plan and the status of sustainability projects to refine and update the CIP list. And review PAG's financial performance to identify required changes in the long-range annual tariff increases. And another measure is to secure low-interest bonds. And the final recommendation for financial self-sufficiency measures is to consider issuing public debt to accelerate additional improvements and catch up on sustainability projects. The master plan also identified several options, a few options for financing and funding, these being, again, revenue bonds, taking advantage of USDA community facility guaranteed or direct loans, some of which we have already implemented. And the Port of Guam Improvement Enterprise Fund is a fund that's established with Merit and is available in the event that we receive any additional federal funding directly to support the Guam, the GCP, the port modernization program, as well as continuously seeking other federal grant and loan programs. Now that we have presented the goals, objectives and strategies contained in the 2013 plan update. This slide discusses the next steps the port will be undertaking and obtaining the financial resources to implement the program's strategies. And this includes, under the five-year tariff petition. It involves engaging engagement with the PUCs. Which requires further transshipment evaluation. Adjusted timing of the 5.65% interim tariff. The impact of the salary adjustments. Updated cargo numbers. Financial implications of issuing the bonds. And the petition schedule once determined will allow for $150 million worth of to be developed and scheduled sustainability projects. Those projects that I, that we showed that were in the gray area of the project listing. And may require petitioning the legislature for debt ceiling relief depending on the timing of the bonds and their issuances by PAG and GITA. This last slide is just simply to illustrate where we are. Mr. Chairman, you, and you didn't make note of this early in the hearing that it was submitted on February 24th, 2014. And there were sixty calendar days for the legislature to act. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. That was a good presentation. I did say that if there was anybody in the audience that wanted to give testimony, certainly welcome at this time. Otherwise, Mr. Brown, do you have any comments to make before I open it up to senators for the inquiry?
No, we're certainly welcoming any questions or comments your members may have.
Great. Thank you very much. I'm gonna go ahead and start off with the first question. And I've read through the master plan and I just want to make sure that, I guess, confirm my understanding of what I read. I guess we're all kinda looking at 2016 as when that military buildup is gonna start. And in what I read, I guess, an analysis was done of the wharf capacity, the crane capacity, the break bulk and the container storage. And it appears that the capacities are sufficient and that the port will not be a choke point. Is that understanding correct?
Well, I think very much all the upgrades that are currently being made to the port, I mean, certainly the main focus was because of military buildup. And I think at this point, we are, and Merit certainly is fairly comfortable with the amount of improvements that are being made, the additional capacities of the Port of Guam that we do not foresee in the near future. Assuming again plans move forward as most recently provided, that the port would be able to accommodate additional capacity as needed. Certainly if they do something far more substantive than what has been proposed in the rescaling back of the buildup, then that would have to be reevaluated. But overall, at the end of the day, even if the military does not move forward with the buildup, the port has added significant capability and capacity, not just in its physical operations, not just in the acquisition of additional cranes. Later this year, we're hoping to be able to work with USDA to obtain a $2 million loan that will allow us to improve other and purchase additional equipment that is needed in the yard to operate. So we're fairly comfortable at this point. Of course, we don't take anything for granted. But assuming things move forward according to most recent projections, we feel fairly comfortable the Port of Guam would be able to accommodate that additional capacity.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to my colleagues. Senator Ogun, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions that, that I think our people would be more or less interested. I think the presentation was fairly comprehensive. Thank you very much, Senator and Ms. Harris and to everyone who participated in the presentation. The immediate question would be with regards to the interim tariff at 5.56%. And the package that is presented before the PUC for consideration. Now, what are we looking at in terms of anticipated adjustments? Presuming the PUC acts favorably on your request in terms of the five-year plan?
Well, actually, PUC quite a number of weeks ago actually approved a 5.65 rate increase that was proposed by the port. They did so with a slight reservation in reviewing our numbers and what we projected. They actually are a bit concerned that we may not be asking for as much as we may need. One of the things that we had intended to do originally was to move forward with the first year of this rate increase. And then after that, have an additional four years, a five-year petition, I'm sorry, that we would bring back to them for them to address. And of course, the 5.6 was primarily to get this whole process started. Instead, while that was in their original written order, by the time we did have the hearing, they actually recommended that they will go ahead and approve the 5.65 with the request that the port immediately turn around and repetition the PUC with the five-year increase. When we do do that, they want us to take into consideration their concerns that perhaps our estimates are lower than what they should be in terms of what our financial needs are gonna be to operate moving into the future. So certainly we are in the process of doing that. We will present that back to the PUC. Certainly it will have their review and determination, but at the same time, I mean, we feel it's a reasonable request. We understand that rate increases are not desired by anyone. At the end of the day, of course, it's gonna, when you break down the numbers, it's gonna cost our consumers out there a little more money. On top of that, you have our main shipper that not too long ago announced a significant rate increase for each cargo container that's coming into or being transshipped through Guam in terms of providing that service. So we do understand that. But at the same time, the reality for the Port of Guam is now that the current facility is coming close to its 50th anniversary. There has been very little money, even though there's certainly days the port has generated significant revenues. But that money unfortunately was not reinvested back into the fiscal operations of the port. Almost every major facility that you see down there was built almost 50 years ago. The only buildings actually that have since been built in that time are the load centers that house the generators. So that's something certainly of concern. And while there have been some expansions to the original yard in the last 25 years, that's really about it. And so in order to move forward and maintain the capabilities that the port must have to ensure the flow of cargo into and out of our community, we're gonna have to make that investment. And there are some things there that are gonna need to be rebuilt. There are things that are gonna need to be built for the first time. We're very fortunate that, you know, DOD through Merit has provided this additional $50 million for their, of course, ultimate intended purposes for their buildup for the military. But in terms of overall improvement to the Port of Guam and to the benefit of our local community, it's quite a significant investment. But the Port of Guam itself needs to be able to re-infuse some of those revenues back into its own operations to maintain the quality of what's needed, including the equipment, the resources, the training to its personnel to ensure that you have an effective and efficiently run port.
Oh, I do understand the investment, the required investment in terms of personnel and also ensuring the safety of everyone that traverses and utilizes and works in that particular location. So the additional question I would like to pose is based on the receipt of the $50 million, and obviously that's DOD-related. And with the extension of the timeline in terms of when the Marines are anticipated to initiate their footprint here on island. Now, looking at that, is the Port Authority of Guam pursuing some additional federal resources through that process? Because I do know that the Guam Water Works Authority was very successful in identifying, at least in the National Defense Authorization Act, $105, $106 million that could be readily available upon the approval of the Record of Decision on the Environment to Impact Statement. So my question would be more aligned with because conceivably the Port Authority of Guam could be the choking point. And that's what you're in the process of trying to make sure that you prevent in terms of the military buildup. Are there any additional resources that the port can pursue to effectively retain the tariff rates at their existing level rather than looking at continual adjustments down the road? But I do understand the need to take care of the personnel. I do understand the need to upgrade the facilities. I do understand the need to ensure safety of our people who work there. But the reality is, is that DOD may have some additional resources, part of the buildup, to reallocate directly towards assisting you in your overall master plan. So is there any, are there anything?
You know, Senator, I have to reiterate this point because I don't think most people understand or appreciate this. But pretty much the Port of Guam, in terms of all the major infrastructure that's currently there, in terms of all the major construction that's happening now, has been funded by DOD. Part of our tariff increase, or the tariff increase that has been, you know, temporarily in this interim period approved by the PUC and what we are looking at addressing when we go back for the five-year petition, will include a capacity to allow the port to also be able, as mentioned by Ms. Harris a little earlier, to look at other financing options that could be available so that debt obviously can be stretched over a longer period of time to allow the port to reinvest back in its facilities. One of the things we've made very clear with this management team is we're prioritizing the upgrades and improvements that need to be made to the yard. Because as far as we're concerned, at the end of the day, that is the biggest priority of the port. It's unfortunate for many years, again, that those investments were not made. Just the rehabilitation and refurbishment of the work areas that our employees have to go through every day. I mean, those are work environments most of us would never want to spend any time in. And we are working to make sure that we prioritize that. If it's an existing facility, that existing facility, one way or the other, will be refurbished and renovated. So that we can ensure we have modern, clean and safe facilities for our people to work and operate out of. Things as mentioned with regards to the administration building. We've had to evaluate that because it's not just a factor of the port employees that work there. But we also have a number of our major customers and shippers that actually have office spaces that are leased out of the administration building. We're very concerned about the current status of the physical structure, the need to continue to maintain it, but of course, it's an old facility. Security issues that we now have to address because of new security requirements. I mean, those things are being put in place with new security facility that's being constructed at this moment that we anticipate will be completed in May. But at the end of the day, we need to address that with the construction of a new administration building. Those are things that we're looking at to be able to pursue other financing options, including bonds that could be paid over a longer period of time with regards to our financing that we're looking at now. Issues like hotel wharf, we're very fortunate that our board a few months ago through the FMF fund was able to fund close to half a million dollars to do the design work, to do the repairs to hotel wharf. Hotel wharf has been inactive for quite a while, Senator Duane. If you're nodding your head, you remember the active days of hotel wharf? To do the refurbishment work that needs to be done. And we've put that package together. We just a few weeks ago received from our consultants PV, the final design work for hotel wharf. It's pretty much ready to be packaged. We're currently working to see if the options available to pursue a Tiger grant. And we are submitting for that with the hope that if we get favorable consideration and we do get Tiger grant funding, that we can go and do the work to get hotel wharf refurbished. Because in terms of our capacity, that is a very critical piece of property that certainly provides us additional ability to accommodate all types of other vessels that don't necessarily require the use of our cranes. It could be row-row vessels, it could be cruise ships. That's a capacity that definitely we need. Right now, in terms of our requirements with the US military, they simply give us 24-hour notice. They can take 1,000 feet of our wharf space. And if that were needed at any time for whatever reason for national security, we already have a schedule of commercial vessels that are coming in on a regular basis that would significantly be adversely impacted by that. So having hotel wharf to us in terms of moving forward is the most immediate way we can add additional wharf capacity with an existing infrastructure and resource that's available. So those are options that are being looked at. But at the end of the day, it's critically important for the Port of Guam to be able to stand on its own two feet, to be able to financially be very capable of financing, as you've seen with the Guam Water Works Authority, as you've seen with the Guam Airport Authority. Because we are a critical means of infrastructure and one probably can be argued most critical. Because we don't have the cargo coming in that provide the resources to our people, the food that we receive and the other things that come through there. We could see how quickly the quality of life of our people can deteriorate. So the initial rate increase that we're looking for does take some of those issues into consideration. So we will still be seeing improvements in construction to the Port of Guam even after this initial project of the $50 million is completed next summer.
I do understand that. I'll just close with this statement, Mr. Chairman. I do understand that the port is pursuing possibly the Tiger grants and some other additional grant funds. But then it comes back to, yes, DOD was able to provide the $50 million support to be able to assist you and the Port Authority in terms of making these necessary upgrades. Now, when I think about $3.1 billion coming out of the government of Japan and possibly in excess of $8.6 billion for this Marines relocation, then I'm certain that they could possibly assist, not for the organic growth and maintenance and expansion of the port to meet the organic growth of our community, but the incremental impact that the military would have at least during the interim between the sixteenth and, I noticed your date is 2023 or 2024. During that timeline, when in fact all of these containers and all of these supplies are coming in from our island to be able to support the Marines relocation, to me, I anticipate that Uncle Sam may be able to provide additional resources so that, let's say, you go before the PUC, you get an additional adjustment over the course of the next six, seven years in terms of your tariffs. You can utilize that for general and maintenance and sustainment. But then receive additional resources to help you at least meet that initial requirement. So that's, that's really more or less where my concern comes in, Mr. Chairman. And I think that you responded indirectly to my question. And I strongly encourage the Port Authority to pursue that as another alternative. Because not only do we have GPA and GWA and some of the other entities, Department of Public Works pursuing funds that are directly gonna be related to the Marines relocation, but certainly the Port Authority falls right into that mix in terms of being a potential beneficiary as a result of that.
Yeah, well, the rate increase, yeah, and just to clarify, the rate increase was not intended at all to address any DOD requirements. I mean, pretty much we feel that the capacity, unless the footprint changes significantly again, we're fairly comfortable that we will be able to accommodate that growth with what's being invested now.
Thank you very much. Senator Marson?
Senator Duane? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's exciting. Good presentation. And with all the oversights that we've had and all of your presentations, it feels like we're doing something now. Great pictures of buildings being knocked down and a lot of the construction. So congratulations to your team. I think maybe to follow up on Senator Ogun's question, and I think you're exactly right, Senator Brown, in terms of the projected need and revenue source that hotel wharf could bring additionally. Are there, I didn't see in the master plan, and like I said, I'm glad that all the operational issues are being dealt with here. Are there other, maybe longer-term opportunities for other properties that the port has for investment and maybe working with GITA, putting out, you know, maybe proposals for other land areas that you have there for possible development?
Well, in terms of private interests, I mean, we've had private interests knocking at our door that, again, we understand is connected depending on what happens with the military buildup. And certainly there's, there's property that is available across the harbor that's owned by the port that can be looked at. But the advantage of that is it would be private investment doing the upgrade.
Right.
And then at the end of the day, certainly when the lease ends, that asset would be returned back to the Port of Guam. And those are things that we have discussed should those projects move forward, requirements that we would want at bare minimum to ensure that the property is still viable and still usable and does not become a burden to the Port of Guam when the life, shelf life ends, so to speak. So those opportunities certainly are available. I think very much we are gauging that that's gonna be dependent on what happens and to the degree of what happens moving forward. Because we do have some companies out of Japan, actually, that may be affiliating or partnering with local business to do that. And at the end of the day, certainly we've had a lot of inquiry for information. But, you know, that's up to them to go back and put together a concrete presentation. And once and if they do that, then certainly we are here to hear what those proposals and concerns are. So we can maximize the use of port property that, again, the money gets reinvested back. But if I can do that on someone else's money and benefit the port, we'd love to do that. But while we've heard discussions in recent months, you know, at the end of the day, we're still waiting for them to come forward with a real concrete proposal that we can review and see if it's possible to entertain it.
So just to allay the concerns that, you know, of course, everybody's always concerned about increases and the like. So what your petition currently exists is that would take care of your static needs at this point in terms of what the picture looks like now? And, because although, and I know, like I said, good to see all the institutional knowledge still here. I know that in presentations that I've seen in the past about military buildup-related issues and, and things outside of organic growth, there's a revenue source in terms of that as well, because you've got that increased traffic and the other fees associated with it. So that would handle, not saying that we, your team wouldn't be very good at going out and asking for additional federal monies with regard to any other situation that would exist. But, but there is a natural increased level of revenue to the port when we get traffic, right?
Yes. Well, and Senator, all our, all our improvements, our security building, all of that is through separate federal grants. I mean, every major infrastructure investment that you see at the Port of Guam is being paid for by the federal government, not just through the DOD money, but through initiatives of the port itself to pursue what grant opportunities are available. And we're very pleased with our most recent audit that if we get another clean audit next year, then we certainly would be in a better position to continue to apply for grants because we're no longer a high-risk investment for them. And so we're very pleased with that. At the end of the day, the Port of Guam and what the advantage of these additional rate increases will provide for us is actually reinvestment. Nothing's static. You cannot have equipment. You cannot have physical infrastructure that is not maintained. And unfortunately, for many, 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 many years at the Port Authority of Guam, that reinvestment was not made. You're certainly welcome, all of you are welcome anytime you'd like. We'd love to have you and tour you around. We'd love to have you and tour you around the facility so you can see what was, you know, where we're at now, and certainly what improvements are being made to the work environment and improvements that are being made to the overall port operations. But all of that costs money. It's not just incremental increases, for example, for salaries, that's one component. But the physical infrastructure and maintaining it, once it's built, that means we have a bigger footprint that we have to take care of and maintain. And those are all high-price tag items. So instead of waiting till everything falls apart, which is pretty much the standard in the past of how we do things, we love being at the ribbon cuttings, new facilities, new equipment. You know, come back five, 10, 20 years later and you see what's there. And certainly, that needs to be done. I mean, I remember the years ago when Waterworks Authority was barely making it. I mean, they could not even borrow a million dollars. Nobody would loan money to them because their financial structure was really bad. The accountability was not there. And certainly, we put together the CCU. The CCU has overseen and certainly addressed a lot of improvements. I mean, we were there and we were here. I was the main sponsor of the legislation that essentially funded the first $100 million bond for the Waterworks Authority. I think the time has come for the Port Authority of Guam. I think we're the one remaining autonomous agency that has not had that infusion and investment and to ensure that it can continue to be viable and continue to grow. You don't want to get to the point that things are in a crisis stance before you start addressing the concerns. And I think we've made significant strides. But now that we're here, I think we need to be consistent in how we address the, not just the human infrastructure, which is the most critical resource we have, but the fiscal infrastructure that we need to keep the port operating.
Paying catch-up is expensive. Just one short question, Mr. Chairman, and I'll close. I saw some account management discussion in the presentation. I've asked the chairman of agriculture, and we're going to go here soon, with regard to the issue of the invasive species council that was created by law and the fund moving forward. Because there was that discussion within this context, there was some discussion that it was the port was going to have to seek some guidance in terms of administering or collecting and the accounting for the fee. Is that in place so that we could... Because we're going to phase this in. That's another financial impact, and I'm actually working with the shippers and others to discuss this. But and see if we can defray that.
Well, I do recall the discussion that we had here with regards to... I think we should come back to the table and, you know, we're very supportive of the issue with regards to it. And now that the community is seeing the impacts of invasive species very evidently. I mean, five or six years ago, the flag was being raised and, oh, interesting, but nobody did anything.
Right.
And look at where we're at now.
Sure.
I think it's a question of who does what in terms of, as we discussed, between agriculture, the shipping companies, certainly the port, and certainly our port users group. We did have meetings with Department of Agriculture discussing those issues. And we're certainly welcoming to come back to the table and see how we can work out those fine-tuned details so that all the collective concerns can be addressed and all the parties involved have some level of comfort.
But you're confident that your accounts management right now could, as long as the protocols are put in place?
I think that's where it comes into place, is who's going to invest the time to do it and who's going to be responsible for the funding. We previously discussed, would it be the shipping companies bringing it in, doing the accounting? Or are we going to have to do it? Of course, I'm not welcoming of any additional responsibilities if I don't have to take them because I've got my day-to-day operations to address. But we are certainly more than happy to sit down and see what can be worked out so those objectives can be met and it doesn't adversely impact our operations.
I have a meeting with the shippers, so I'll talk to the chairman and we'll get back with you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator. Senator Eta? Senator Rodriguez?
I have a couple of questions. Now, in the executive summary section of the master plan, there's a table ES-6 which talks about the bonding capacity results of the tariff increases by scenario. And I guess in that table, it lays out that basically during the years 1 through 5, the rates will be increased 4.36% annually. And then beyond that, it will be 3.95% annually. And my understanding is that with that level of rate increase, that will generate sufficient revenues to pay for the salary adjustments, procure the necessary equipment, changeouts, and whatnot. But now, if we take a look at... If we take a look at the table, Table 6-3, which basically shows the financial status of the Port Authority over the years, it shows that by 2021, the port will be in a deficit financial situation. Help me understand if I'm missing something. And then, of course, if the military buildup does occur on 2016, then, of course, the opposite occurs and the port becomes, you know, a wash and will be in a net surplus to the tune of, for example, $11 million, $12 million by the year 2018. So maybe you can help me understand if I'm missing something here.
At least preliminary, while Maria's looking through that, I do want to relay, certainly, if we do have the military buildup, that's going to be a tremendous plus to the Port Authority of Guam because we're going to have enhanced cargo that's going to come in. And that's going to allow us to pay our bills, as we say, John, right? If we don't, there's also the reality, right now, even if we don't have the military buildup and we go consistently with where we're at and container cargo continues to decrease, well, that's like having a mortgage and not being able to pay the bill. What happens?
But aren't the rate increases premised on organic growth?
Well, that is the hope, and that's what we're going to invest in. There's going to be a plus, definitely, if we get additional cargo to address that concern. Assuming everything stays constant as it is now, that we have the rate of growth that we have on Guam, I think we can feel some level of comfort. I look at the military buildup, even though it's been extended out as a plus. I mean, I heard recently from the administration, we're looking at maybe $700 million to $800 million a year for the next 10 years of military activity on Guam. And certainly, if they're going to bring anything in through the island, primarily, it's going to be brought through the port. So that will allow a consistent level of revenue.
And the master plan makes it very clear in its discussion that if the military buildup does occur,
Sure.
that the port may have to take a look at rolling back the rates because it's going to have a large surplus. But I think it's assuming that if that military buildup doesn't come or comes further down the road, by 2021, the table that is provided in the master plan shows that the port will be in deficit mode.
Well, it'll be adjusted accordingly. Because we won't know what at that particular time. Then we... Yes, it may change. But again, it all depends. It's a moving target.
Well, but that table that I'm referring to is based on the projection of how much cargo is going to be coming through.
Right.
And based on that projection and the proposed tariff increase, then I guess what falls out at the end is, you know, the financial situation of the port. So what I'm getting at then is if by 2021, the port is going to be already projected to be $2 million in deficit, then maybe the 4.5, 6% increase followed by a 3.9 is not sufficient?
Yes. And as I mentioned earlier in our presentation with the PUC, five, six weeks ago, that issue was brought up. And they have asked us to go back to the drawing board and resubmit for the five-year petition because they are a bit concerned that we may not be asking for as much as we need. And so we will do that for the five-year petition. And again, I mean, a lot of things at this point, I mean, this is to give us an intended plan or framework. It's going to have to shift depending on the dynamics. And as it does, we can come back and readdress the master plan itself and also, you know, the fees that are charged. I mean, that's a moving target. That'll always be a moving target. Nothing's constant. And if we do get to a point where revenues coming in are not meeting the overall operational cost of the port, assuming that the port is being responsible as well, I think we're going to have to demonstrate that we're being financially responsible in our own house. Other than we will simply have to go back to PUC to have those issues readdressed.
Going back to that table ES-6, it talks about the bonding capacity of $71 million. Can you help me understand, is that 71 million on top of the current $54 million debt ceiling that has been authorized to the port? Or is that 54 plus, plus whatever it is to bring it up to 71? I guess 54 plus 17? Please speak into the mic.
This was in addition, 54 million in addition to, on top of the existing funding that we...
No, I'm asking, you've got here in this table showing that I guess, based on the financial analysis with the rate increases and whatnot, that the port should be able to borrow, has a bonding capacity of $71 million. So is that 71 million on top of the 54? Or is it an additional $17 million to bring it up to 71?
I could answer it, but I could keep it faster. If you don't mind it, I...
Okay. Senators, my name is Jeff Peck. I'm with Parsons Brinckerhoff. We've been the acting owner, agent, and engineer and have had a role in development of all of these documents. The basic issue, first of all, I'd like to address your first question, Senator Eta, which had to do with... Wait a minute, I'll go to the second one. The current borrowing that's demonstrated in the master plan is $25.5 million. And that's the sum total of the $12 million crane loan, the $10 million SLE loan, and an existing $3.5 million yard equipment loan. The port is looking at also borrowing an additional $2 million for additional equipment, which was discussed earlier. So that would bring the current anticipated borrowing to $27.5 million. The amount of the bonds, and it's, you can pick a number, it's going to change as we relook at the five-year petition, their term here. But the way to look at this is you still have underneath the $54.5 million debt ceiling, the difference between 54.5 and this 27.5. And it's the, whatever bond issuance that we go forward with, whatever that magnitude is, is actually added to 27.5. It's not added to 54.5. So as it, for talking purposes, if it was a $71 million bond issuance, you would add that to 27.5. And that would bring you to a number that is the total borrowing. And then the debt relief would be the difference between that number and the 54.5 ceiling that you currently have in place. As far as your first question goes, we do recognize that there are some negative numbers that show up in that table. And there's a misrepresentation of what that means in terms of actual debt because it's not measuring cash flow. It's measuring debt that somehow also factors in depreciation. But the reality is that the cash flow is not as negative as it would appear to be when you look at that table. It's sort of a misrepresentation. So when we prepare the new schedules, we're going to kind of clean that up a little bit so it doesn't appear to be so misleading. And there will be some adjustments that take place in the five-year petition. So if I can, I would suggest that people don't focus necessarily on the 4.36 that was advertised when that master plan snapshot was created. Because we know that the PUC is asking us to look at the... What was I going to say there? Well, we have the wharf, hotel wharf is a project, for instance, that has come into the mix that wasn't in the mix in the beginning. And we have to kind of factor in what would happen there if the port decides it wants to, for instance, advance the execution of hotel wharf. That is something that if it were involved in a bond issuance as opposed to, you know, some other mechanism for getting it done like a Tiger grant, then we would have to probably jack up those rates to make that affordable. Right now, it wasn't even in the mix when we first looked at it. So if hotel wharf were to get into the picture, if we were to start doing things for other, to be determined projects on a higher priority, then the possibility of that number going up exists. Right now, the bond issuance that was originally modeled was to occur in year 2021. And that's out beyond the first five years. So if it turns out that we're moving it forward, then there would be a consequence of that and it would cause a rate adjustment. The PUC is also asking us to look at the transshipment business and take a closer look at that. Right now, they believe that it's not necessarily operating in the black. And we still have an ongoing debate with them on whether that's the case. So we have to take a look at that. And they've already suggested that there be a rate increase for transshipment based on how they're currently looking at it. They're asking us to take a look at the salary adjustment issue in a different way. They're asking us to look at how you use the CPI in a different way. So there are a number of things that we know the PUC is going to ask us to look at that are going to cause us to remodel things slightly differently. So I wouldn't lock in if I can suggest that on the 4.36 at this point because we don't know for sure what the number will be. What we do know is that it's the right order of magnitude. And it's not going to make a significant difference, for instance, to the economic impact of Guam if that number were 5.1 versus 4.36, that kind of thing.
Okay. Well, then I can understand the, you know, that it's kind of a moving target. But I guess for purposes of discussion, that is what was put into the master plan. And so that is what I'm focusing on. Now, along with that then, given the proposal of a 4.36 rating tariff increase over the next five years and followed by 3.95, there was then a table that was provided in terms of the economic impact of that. And you'll find that in Table ES-9, the tariff impact on retail prices. And I think that's probably what the legislature is going to be looking at, is you're going to be increasing the tariff down at the port. That means the cost of bringing in those goods is going to increase. How's that going to translate to the goods on the shelf? In Table ES-9, it gives four examples. One of them, and of course, the most common one, is how would that impact the cost of Spam? So can you help me understand, maybe interpret in layman's terms, what that table means with respect, take for example, simplify it, what those proposed rate increases, what the impact it would have on the cost of a can of Spam?
Louis Wallin, it's with Parsons Brinckerhoff.
Please make it close.
Yes, what this table does is look at what the cumulative effect of the tariff increases would be on these products, including a can of Spam. And the finding was that the tariffs that you're discussing would have a very moderate impact on that can of Spam of about a penny. And the reason for that is that shipping, of course, is only a portion of the cost of a can of Spam. You've got to produce it, can it, distribute it, sell it. And then even within shipping, the tariffs at the port are only a small percentage of that compared to carrying it across the ocean. So the percentage increase in the tariffs does not create the same percentage increase in the cost of goods. And it's back very modest.
So is this where you apply that economic phrase, everything remaining constant except for the tariff increase?
Correct.
That the only impact then that that tariff increase will have is that in 2033, the price of that can of Spam, which today is $2.99, will increase by one penny?
Correct.
Everything else staying constant?
Everything else staying constant. That's correct.
All right. Okay. Can you clarify the concept again, going back to that table ES-6? This concept of pay-as-you-go. And there was a figure associated with that of $79 million.
Sure. The table here is designed to look at how improvements beyond the minimum port organization program would be paid for, $150 million improvements, many of which are to be determined and to be scheduled. The plan at this point in time called for a mix of pay-as-you-go, which means basically you cash flow the expenses out of annual operating revenues and debt, which would be bonding to bring those future revenues forward and using the bond proceeds to pay for major projects. The actual mix will be determined depending on the schedule and timing of the improvements. But this is the point in time analysis of what that mix could be.
Okay. You know, I was looking at, there was a lot of discussion in the master plan about the existing state of affairs of many of the facilities at the port. And the condition of F1, the condition... Um, and it, the condition of F1, the condition of Gulf Pier, the condition of, uh, the tank farm in Area A, um... And I guess F1, Gulf Pier, all the fuel that we consume comes in through those things. And then, of course, there's, uh, there's Area A Tank Farm. I notice that, at, at least to me, it seems that those are, are also very important facilities. But I notice it is not in the mix of the projects, either the modernization, sustainability, or the to-be-scheduled. Notwithstanding that, I find that we've got, basically, the port's ready to commit three point five million dollars uh, for the Aggett Marina and the, and the Harbor of Refuge. So I, I was trying to understand... Help me to understand how that priority came up.
Well, the funds also that are being committed to the, um, Aggett Marina and the Harbor of Refuge, which I think many who, who frequent these areas would certainly argue are critical priorities. Certainly with the damage to, most recently, a few months ago with Dock D at Aggett Marina that was essentially split in half. All the tenants there have become sort of homeless. Uh, all of those projects are being federally funded, including the Harbor of Refuge. I mean, the port has pursued, uh, federal, uh, grants that are available to fund that. Uh, you do have legitimate concerns with the other facilities of the port. Uh, that is something that we're looking at. We're also looking at, we've discussed that any new revenue that we receive, including, um, now that Cementon is operational as of January with their first, uh, concrete shipment to the facility. Uh, we have in the past deferred the rental payments on that. Uh, we are looking certainly in any new revenue that comes in, for example, through that process of dedicating those funds to address the other upgrades and improvements that's required by the port as the owner of the property, uh, to reinvest that back into those facilities so that we can address the upgrades or improvements to ensure the facilities are sound.
Okay. So do I understand then that that three and a half million dollars is federal funds?
Yes, all of those funds.
Okay. It wasn't clear. It wasn't clear.
Okay, but all of, all of those projects are federally funded. As I mentioned earlier, almost every major infrastructure improvement you are currently seeing at the Port of Guam, and certainly at the marinas, what we've most recently seen at the Gregorio Perez, uh, Marina also has been federally funded, yes. I mean, our staff in the Pining Division's been very aggressive in pursuing those options that are available to us. And fortunately, we've been given those grants.
Um, looking at the, uh, there's a CIP schedule that was given. It's in Appendix five dash one, on page five dash one point one. And, um, it, it talks about, basically, there's several projects there, um, that are to be funded by the SLE loan. And it shows that seven million dollars is being earmarked for the SLE loan repair to be undertaken in 2013. Uh, a million dollars for cargo handling equipment in 2015. Um, and originally, when the board had passed the resolution approving the, uh, the port to go out and get the ten million dollar loan, uh, the third use of that ten million dollar loan was, was for the, uh, funding of a financial management system. But in, in that appendix, in that document, it says that, um, the FMS system is not to be paid through, uh, cash. It'll be basically coming out of cash flow and, and not from the SLE loan. So I, it kinda leaves me wondering, so we've earmarked eight million dollars of the ten million dollar loan. Where's the other two going?
The remaining two million dollars, uh, for the ten million loan that we are going to be seeking from the SLE, uh, that would be for equipment purchases?
I was just, uh, I was looking at the list, and I couldn't, you know, I was, as I was going through, it very clearly said, "From the SLE loan, seven million dollars for the Wharf repair." Uh, "From the SLE loan, a million dollars for the equipment." Um, and, and it made it very clear the FMS was not to be funded from the SLE loan, which was part of the reason why the F, uh, the SLE loan was, was approved by the board. So, so if those plans have changed, I was trying to find in the schedule where the other two million dollars is going to be committed to.
Afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Afternoon.
Gentlemen, members, my name is Glenn Nelson, commercial manager at the port. Uh, to answer your question, uh, Ms. Chairman, uh, from a simple mind, it, it's basically that, um, the SLE at this present time is currently on loan, at, at least in terms of cost for expenditure. What we do know is that we were given the approval, uh, through the board, through legislations, that enabled us to go out on that borrowing occurrence. However, first and foremost, we're going to address the SLE. Original projections were six point five. However, the reality is, they may increase to seven to eight million.
So what?
If, if the question is what we're gonna do with the remainder, it may increase to seven million, it could be eight million, depending on, uh, the, the cost of project at bid.
Yeah, well, the master plan is earmarking seven.
Understood, understood, sir. But then again, yeah, we're not gonna truly know that, that amount until it's bid out. Um, if there is any money that's available by law, through contractual agreement with the, the bank, we can't spend anything else other than the FMS, if in fact there were money available. After pouring a bid, an equipment acquisition, um, it's not a matter of the port trying to, uh, to identify other uses other than that originally improved or approved by yourself and the legislations as well as the bank, uh, the loan documents. Uh, we are mindful to that, first and foremost, SLE. Uh, we're already behind the ball on that, and, and that's our, that's our primary focus at present.
So, so you're basically saying that two million dollars, uh, that's unearmarked, is being really kinda
Like a contingency.
Held in place for in case the SLE, uh, has a cost over.
If, if that money, if there is money available, uh, after equipment acquisition and SLE, then obviously the port may proceed down the route of acquiring an FMS, FMS, if, if we had the amount, um, at, at, at their discretion. Uh, but for, for to even contemplate spending on anything other than the FMS, I don't think that's ever crossed their mind.
Oh, I'm not saying.
Oh, okay.
A lot of masking it.
I'm sorry, sir.
The, the document was, was showing very explicitly, clearly, uh, what the SLE is being earmarked for.
Thank you.
Um, the, I have a question on the, um, FMS and the TOS. Now, I was reading through, um, there's the, um, the minutes of the, I guess it was an out, outbrief meeting on July nineteenth, twenty thirteen. And in there, there was a statement that was made. "PAG expressed some concern about the disconnect between the current FMS and the TOS systems, stating that they are losing revenue due to data leakage. There was some discussion about interim data transfer through manually batch reporting until all systems reside atop a common database." So help me understand, are we talking about now an FMS system and a TOS system that are not talking to each other? And when, when will that linkage be, be corrected?
When you talk leakage, you're talking, when you talk TOS, when you talk terminal operating system and financial, those are two, two different. So when you talk about leakage, when the operation is completed, uh, information is manually given up to the finance system. And the finance would input all those, uh, information. With the new task that we're going after, um, matter of fact, I believe it's this month, G4 should be coming out to do that analysis of our current operating system, uh, to fill those, those actual gaps. So the system that we have now is, after completion of vessel operations, everything is manually brought up to the finance system and has to be, uh, inputted manually. And then the same thing with, uh, the carriers, when they submit their documents to the port, has to be done manually. With the new task that's coming out, that would be able to do some of, uh, that work where everything is now electronic. So trying to bridge that, that gap there. When you talk about leakage and...
Okay. And, and, but there's no, no, no projection at this point as to when this disconnect will in fact be corrected?
Right now, the port is going through the process of getting an initial assessment in terms of what we need and how is that gonna be integrated, and at the end of the day, what is it gonna cost us? And so we are currently going through that process of having the company come in and do that assessment so all of these things can be interconnected. Uh, ultimately, the desire, as with most modern ports, is when you have cargo being taken off a vessel, it's already electronically recorded, uh, so that we would already identify immediately the revenue that comes with that. Right now, we don't have the ability to do that electronically. It, it's a manual process. We take that information down in the yard, that information's manually, you know, carried up to the finance office. The finance office sits there and plugs all that in. Uh, when we do get to the point where we have a fully operational, um, terminal operating system, then that's how we'll be able to do it. We'll be able to keep track of that, so there's not a necessary need to record it, manually take it back up and, and manually put it back in the system again. We'll be able to do that as cargo moves in and out of the port. Data operating system, when the cargo goes out, we'll be able to record it going out. We'll be able, when the truckers bring an empty container back, we will let it try and be able to scan that, that container coming into the port facility. Uh, we'll be able to any given time tell you where it's located. And we don't have to resort to manual charts, as historically has been the case, uh, to identify where that cargo is. And we'll let you know when that cargo gets on a vessel and it goes out. The systems also provide a general summary of what's contained in the containers. So we will all pull up a screen, it'll show us where it's at, and it'll show us generally what's in it.
Thank you. Um, one of the, uh, recommendations that was made, um, and it's, it's listed there in, um, page ES dash fifteen and ES dash sixteen. Uh, one of the recommendations was to secure delegated procurement authority. And I guess in one of the discussions, um, the port... The port mentioned that the GM has recommended to the board of directors that special legislation be requested to enable the port to have procurement authority and not have to go through GSA. And my, my question is, um, has the port initiated the, the dialogue with GSA in accordance with, there's, there's a section, you know, right now outlined in the, um, in the rules and regulations for the, uh, for procurement and under TUGAR. Um, there's, it's outlined in Section twenty-one oh five, basically, what are the components that the chief procurement officer would, would be looking at, um, if an agency came up to ask for, uh, delegation of authority? And so my basic question is, has that, uh, dialogue been initiated? And at the point now where, you know, you formally submitted that request and GSA said, "No," or "Here are the, the steps that need to be done" before we even really consider, uh, any kind of special legislation?
You know, I have been in dialogue with, uh, the chief procurement officer, Claudia Thojie, 'cause we've had recent issues to deal with, with our generator procurement, our scanning equipment, uh, the power lines that we need to put in place to repair to LC3, uh, for the CFS building in High Tower. Uh, and she certainly has been, uh, in, in the most recent encounter of our work, fairly supportive of assisting us in doing so. Um, she has relayed to us more than once that she is not of the position that the port should have its procurement authority back. We obviously do not agree. I mean, we very much are of the opinion that the port, in order to move forward, in order to operate effectively and efficiently, needs to be able to prioritize its procurement needs. While we know we still need to meet the same procurement, procurement standards and requirements, we will have the flexibility and ability to say what goes at the top of the pile, what becomes a priority, uh, versus having that process go through GSA where pretty much the procurement for the rest of line agencies of the government of Guam is also a priority. Uh, so while you're asking me, have we formally initiated, I guess we could in paper. We could, we could certainly put it down and, and on the record and see if, um, uh, the chief procurement officer would be open to that possibility, and we could do that. As we've relayed, we've had our, our initial, uh, group of staff go through the training program at GCC. I know they're coming to conclusion in completing that. And then certainly when the class opens again, we wanna be able to expand so all our key personnel at the port that are involved in procurement will have gone through that training as well. Uh, we don't feel we're incapable. I mean, where we do, for example, our construction of procurement, the port is able to do that. Where we were able to have to do additional work to procure the crane, support is able to do that. Uh, most recently, we've been working with GSA, uh, to try to facilitate, uh, the surveying out of Gantry Two and the RTGs. And especially the RTGs need to move soon, because part of the footprint of where the RTGs are are on the expanded, uh, yard area that we need for construction. Uh, recently, GSA came back, and we've been following up with them for a number of months. They recently came back and relayed that they may allow the port to go out and do that, uh, the disposition or surveying out of that equipment and see if there's interested companies out there that would like to obtain the metal for that. Uh, maybe that's a first step. Um, you know, for whatever reason, historically, the, the issue happened a number of years ago, that the port, uh, perhaps was not doing things in order, and GSA found a reason to, to pull the procurement authority back. But at this day and age, in order for the port to operate effectively, efficiently, to be able to get what it needs, it needs and, and can accommodate that priority. I mean, I've, I'm dumbfounded when I have to wait for a five hundred dollar part for a top pick on a million dollar piece of equipment, and it takes five months. And I can't say, "Oh, GSA's the reason." There's a whole bunch of issues involved in the procurement, but that cannot be the standard under which we operate.
So, so you're gonna initiate that dialogue formally?
I have no problem. I, I can write. I can write a letter of request and see for the record what the official response would be.
Sure.
But as of the...
And, and I suggest...
As I would say, four or five weeks ago, the answer was unequivocally no.
Sure. And, and, and I suggest you take a look at, at really the, um, Section twenty-one oh five of GAR, um, which, which basically outlines factors to consider in making the decision to delegate, include. Okay.
Well, and, and we feel that by, by ensuring that our, our staff is going through additional training requirements, we, we feel very much we're making a good faith effort to demonstrate that we're quite capable of assuming our procurement. We do it in other aspects. We just are not able to procure it for other things that, uh, we need outside of construction.
Sure. Um, in the recommendations that were made, um, one of them is to right-size facilities, maintenance, and repair budget. Can, can you clarify that? I mean, is, is this suggesting that, that the budget is undersized, it's oversized, uh?
Well, certainly for facility maintenance, I would say it needs to be right-sized, because, uh, again, I, I think we need to do that consistent reinvestment in the maintenance of the facilities, and that's not been happening.
So, so what is the understanding then of, of, of right? Because I, I didn't read through here as to what's the magic formula for the right size.
I would give you the, I know you want to...
I'm operations, so I'll respond for maintenance. Uh, we talk about right-sized, um, budgets, uh, for facility, what for facility maintenance? I thought you meant equipment maintenance. Um, I don't think it's acceptable. Facility maintenance, okay, alright, alright. Faci- uh, facility maintenance. There was two structured plans that were provided.
Try, try to step back a little bit. You're, you're...
I'm used to that. I'm used to the single man. Um, there's, there's a structured maintenance plan that was provided, um, the, the crane and also the equipment. With that, you have a plan of a kind of the projects, your plan, your corrective, uh, and unproceeding. And that's your right-sized budget to ensure that you're able to fund that, those plans through, uh, through the year. So there's, uh, facility or maintenance has that plan, has that plan in place. So that's when you say your, your right-size, your right, right-sized budget. Uh, in the past, they would, uh, present their budget, but now there's a plan that shows what needs to be done. Uh, presents your equipment, your scheduled repairs, whether it's through your, um, um, required, um, um, what do you say, the manufacturers, changing of oil, the tires and stuff. So now we have a plan that's provided through our consultants for both the cranes and the actual, uh, equipment. So that's where else you would be getting to on the right-sized facility maintenance and repair budget plan.
Everything John said is true, uh, but I wanna supplement it slightly. Typically, uh, if you have facilities, and in this case, we're talking about buildings, pavement, utilities, fencing, things that are not equipment, um, you can expect to pay someplace between one and two percent a year. Uh, based, one point, one point two percent of it, of an asset's value can be dedicated annually to routine maintenance and repair, non-recurring maintenance and repair activities. You're at the high end when you have collaborated facilities. You're at the low end when you have, uh, fairly, fairly well-maintained and new facilities. This overall plan here is, is adapting a structured maintenance program for cranes. It's adapting a structured maintenance program for, uh, yard equipment. And then the last piece is the structured maintenance program, if you will, for all the other facilities. So the one, so we, we estimated, um, at the time we did the master plan, that there was about a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of facilities, and the... $150 million worth of facilities, and the, um, model projects 1% a year of that amount, uh, for reinvestment or to perform routine maintenance and repair of facilities, including the new facilities, as the GM explained earlier, there's going to be bigger footprint, more facilities, that has to be included as well. But, but the 1% is what we're calling the right-size number.
Okay. Is, is the current, is the current budget, I guess you've looked at the current budget, is it, is it below, is it undersized?
Somebody has an electric personality. Um, what I, what I would say, is this, am I coming through?
Yes.
What I would say, um, not, not comedically, but if you take a look at the facilities, it's undersized. I mean, at least the application of budget is undersized.
Okay, all right. One of the other recommendations was to implement the structured maintenance program for the gantry cranes. And that had to do with the, um, I guess, the PMC contract. So what is the status of that PMC contract? I know we've been wrestling with that for what, past year and a half?
It's currently, uh, we're getting close to the end. It's still at the legal. There are some, I believe, some wording on the contract that has to be secured. And here's Ms. Alma with an...
Good afternoon, sir.
Go ahead and identify yourself.
Oh, Alma Javier, I'm the procurement manager for the port. Just yesterday, in my discussion with the legal counsel on the PMC contract, um, she already had advised me to go ahead and begin petitioning PUC, or submit the petition to PUC for the PMC contract approval. That means she's anticipating that the contract, she'll finalize the contract within this week or next week. And therefore, from that point, we send it out to the vendor for execution at the same time. At the same time, concurrently, we're petitioning, we're submitting the petition to PUC for, for the contract approval.
What's the threshold for the port for sending contracts over to PUC?
A million dollars, sir.
One million? Does any of the other senators have any questions? I'll, I'll yield for now.
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick follow-ons. Just in anticipation of all of your ongoing activities, as well as field and facility upgrades and whatnot, by January of 2016, what do you anticipate your excess capacity to be? Would you be able to provide that, at least just a net general estimate?
Well, we're deliberating that only because it depends on what type of capacity, horizontal, vertical, combination of both. Uh, we estimate initially, on a conservative side, between 25 to 30% additional capacity.
Okay. And then, another question is in regards to the proposed measure. I noticed that section three, is there any issues or concerns with regards to that particular provision? Because it reads, notwithstanding any provision of the plan itself, neither the passage of this act nor the approval and adoption of the Jose de Lengro commercial port authority of Guam master plan update 2013 report exhibit A shall be construed to repeal or amend any existing law, statute, rule, regulation without subsequent and express repeal or amendment by listener to Guam. So with this particular provision, and with the eventual adoption of the master plan, is there anything that the port would like to present to the legislature during the course of this public hearing, that perhaps would, the chairman would consider and the committee would consider in terms of, uh, making sure that it's consistent with the master plan and the activities of the port authority?
I'm still trying to figure out section three. I mean, this old language, we keep using that. I don't know why we have attorneys. Everything's notwithstanding any provision, and we spend an enormous amount of time passing legislation. Um, I don't know the purpose of this particular section or what the ultimate purpose of it is. I mean, our intent is to bring forth, uh, the current master plan for the port, so that we all are aware of what the outline and footprint is that the port's going to be working on, not just for the next five years. I mean, the, the plan essentially is to give us the 20-year outlook. So I, I really can't answer that. I'd have to leave you, defer to you as legislators to determine even if that section is needed. I, I'm not in a, of concern that by adopting this master plan, we're somehow inadvertently amending any other law other than to replace the original 2007 plan that was approved by the previous legislature.
Okay, we had a conservative lawyer help draft.
Well, one of these days, when we graduate from the "notwithstanding any provision," because this is becoming a standard means of legislation, it means we're not researching enough, because we just want to make sure we cover everything. And then the lawyers try to figure out, uh, what exactly is next, and how does this apply to other things?
All right, thank you. Um, if we go back to that list of, um, your CIPs, uh, I guess the sustainable, um, there was one there about the demolition of the gantry two and the RTG, and I was just curious about the comment under the note column there. It says, "This is a placeholder figure. Property has been transferred to GSA at no cost." I guess I'm confused. Where, where is this property? Is it back under your control?
Well, my understanding is when we survey out the equipment, it, it's surveyed out to GSA. Right now, of course, we have physical possession of, of the gantry two and the RTGs on the port property. But as it was previously surveyed out, and it was actually surveyed out, I believe, Senator, prior to the passage of your legislation that you did last year.
Yeah, but it cooled back.
Well, hopefully, I mean, assuming that there's a value to it, and we are actually able to go out and rebid this, as GSA's recommending, that we can get someone, because ultimately, we'd like to get it removed. But if there's any value certainly to the, uh, the metal that's there, we'd like to take advantage of that. But in terms of our, our books for the port, I mean, we have to, we have to take that off as an asset.
Well, when they're subject of demolition, uh, in reading the assess, the assessments that were made on the tanks at Area A, uh, I think it mentioned, there's one that's currently in use, it stores firewater. There's two that they think can be returned to serviceability, and the rest are basically, might as well, uh, take it down. And, and I'm wondering, is it, is, is the state of deterioration at the point where it is now a hazard and really needs to put more priority on, on taking those things down, just as you would that gantry crane?
Area A, um, basically, you're dealing with a port facility that's under the management of Mobil. Uh, there are some issues between the port and Mobil that remain outstanding, and there is a need to address. The simple answer to your question is, uh, right now, the tanks are not being used. They're, they're, they're empty.
But they're deteriorating, correct?
They are deteriorating. But, uh, the more concern at the port, Senator Brown and the Board of Directors is basically the lost revenue associated with the facility in its present condition. So that's where we are, are charged with, trying to work with Mobil and possibly others to bring that facility up to standard and start realizing some revenues. But at present, um, it is still under the management agreement with Mobil. It is not being used, uh, other than for fire suppression water, uh, but there is no petroleum product being stored in that facility.
And there was, there was discussion in here that Mobil will not invest in, um, in that tank farm to bring it up to standard, uh, because they don't invest in property that doesn't belong to them. So my main concern is that if in fact, it's been assessed that those tanks are so deteriorated, you, you couldn't, you know, the only way you're going to put it back into use is you take it down and build it back up. And I'm just, I'm just concerned, is it deteriorated to the point where now it's really a hazard? Because if we get a typhoon, that thing blows, it's probably going to blow over towards the container yard and cause more damage there. So, that's...
Senator, you have a very legitimate concern, and I, right now, my main priority is, because it's in the yard, is addressing RTGs because of the expansion and gantry two.
Sure.
And we certainly will take note of the concern. You have a very legitimate, it's something we've discussed, and as I regularly, every now and then walk past these, um, these fuel tanks. I mean, I, I do see them on a regular basis when I take my walks down to Hotel Wharf, so, um, I will take note of the concern you raised.
Okay, fine, thank you.
If I may, I, I'm not a lawyer, but, um, in looking at section three, the one that you just raised the question about, Senator, um, the thought occurs to me that, um, when you approve the master plan, we can't really fully execute that master plan with the debt ceiling that's currently in place. And so there will be some future action required to, um, to do that. So what I would suggest, or at least the thought that occurs to me, is that when you're approving the master plan, it's really subject to, um, at least the implementation part of approving the master plan is subject to, uh, going through the normal procedure and engaging the PUC, number one. And then the future, when the timing is right, coming back to the legislature and dealing with that, uh, debt ceiling issue. Um, I don't know if that's exactly what that meant, but that's what...
So, so that $71 million bonding capacity wouldn't be the new debt ceiling ish, uh, debt ceiling that we, that we would be looking for?
Well, whatever the bond issuance is, as I said, the, you know, the way the math works, you, you add the, whatever that bond amount is to the 27 and a half million that you currently are borrowing, then you subtract 54.5 and you figure out what that relief number is. But there'll be some point in time, within the next 20 years, when they'll approach that. If they decide to really go forward with the bond issuance in the first five years, then it would be part of the five-year petition process, and it would need to be done sooner rather than later.
I, I understand. And, and I guess, uh, when I was asking about this bonding capacity, I guess one way to approach it is, the master plan gets approved, you go to PUC, petition for your five-year rate increase and all that, and if you find that your bonding capacity is in fact around $70 million, you come back here again.
Yes.
And as opposed to saying, if, if, if based on the numbers that you guys have done in your analysis, that really a $71 million debt ceiling, uh, would really be more rational, uh, then maybe that is something that we may want to put into the bill to, to then increase that, that borrowing authorization. And I think that $54 million was really pegged on, when the question was asked, um, if the military buildup was going to go away, how much is it going to take to modernize that port just to meet organic growth demands? And the figure came out, $54 million. So now, you guys are coming out saying, "A bonding capacity is feasible, given these conditions, this level of rate increase, uh, a bonding capacity of $71 million really should be considered, because, uh, financially feasible to be able to go out and borrow that much."
Yes, sir.
So, so it's up to you. I mean, earlier, you guys said it's a moving target?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, we agree, but...
You agree what?
One of the things, whatever you...
We, we wouldn't mind, Senator, if you put that, you put that in now, so that that latitude is available, because I'm sure moving forward, uh, before any, any formal and final attempts could be made to pursue any additional bonding capacity, we would be dialoguing anyway. Uh, if you were open to putting that, uh, new ceiling in the bill, we wouldn't object to it.
Have you got a time, I think you got a timeframe of, we, we, there was a lot of reference made to going out, borrowing bonds and whatnot. Is there kind of a general timeframe that we're looking at, possibly, that, um, that, that you may be looking at doing that?
I'll, I'll answer the first part, and then the GM will correct me. Um, as I said originally, the one we modeled, that we were looking at getting past, getting in front of the buildup, and really focusing the first five years on the improvements, and not necessarily getting into the heavy-hitting sustainability project. So we modeled it, uh, first bond issuance was like 2021. But as I said before, uh, Hotel Wharf was not, uh, available to us. It is a critical marine asset that they want to restore sooner rather than later. It does buy them a lot of flexibility in terms of dealing with the downtime on the facility or any casualties that might occur to the facility if they've, if they've got this alternative marine asset in place. So, if I'm guessing, and I'm not going to guess for the GM, but I'm guessing that they probably want to move it up a little bit sooner rather than later in this instance, since, uh, since they now have a design on the shelf. Um, we still haven't resolved, or the port hasn't resolved, whether or not they would be successful in partially funding that through a tiger grant, or possibly, um, getting FHWA assistance on the road portion of, uh, that project. But, but by and large, I think, uh, they want to move forward with the project.
I mean, certainly, right now, we're in the process of putting together our package for hotel grant, and every federal official, including our meetings to Washington DC, um, at Merit, we've relayed our desire to put this tiger grant package together. Uh, hopefully, if that were to move forward, we would like to see that executed as soon as possible. Worst-case scenario, in the event we're not able to obtain federal funding, then we will probably look very quickly at alternates, including, uh, bond issuance. The other factor, as I mentioned, is the admin building, not so much because we reside in it, uh, but also our tenants and, and their concerns. And we've been in dialogue, we have PUG meetings, uh, with our port users group every month. Uh, they've expressed their concerns about the facilities, and also what future expansion ideas they may have as tenants of a new facility. Uh, and also the advantage we're looking at, uh, if we, we are looking at an alternate footprint of where that administration building will be located on port property. We definitely have the potential of the existing ground space and parking lot attached to that, uh, that that can eventually be incorporated as part of either the yard or building of bonded warehouses, or something that has more an immediate use and value to the yard operations and tenants that might be interested, uh, in renting such space in closer proximity to the port yard. So those are options that we're looking at. I wouldn't be surprised if we come back in the next year or two, if not sooner, uh, to look at that possibility, because I, I think those are all critical elements that need to be put in place.
Thank you. The final question that I have is, um, one, the, the one recommendation, um, that is made is, um, "To make significant changes to the current operating and management practices and strategies. Key adjustments include right-size staffing, attainment of required skill sets, elevation of performance expectations, et cetera." Now, um, have there been any internal discussions as to how, how that change might, might, um, might be brought about?
Well, I know with regards to employee evaluations and performance, we're going to be hopefully finalizing the, the whole port structure with regards to that soon. Um, I know we want to rebid it out to have, uh, another consultant come back in to finish that plan. Uh, in terms of training priorities, in terms of the internal infrastructure, um, we are in discussions with how to address that. Many other areas in terms of prioritizing, uh, our most recent hiring, for example, is primarily focused out in the yard. He will see more of those positions that we filled. Or in the event someone retires or resigns, uh, we move very quickly to see how we can facilitate that. And John is nodding, because we made that commitment to do that, uh, and we will continue to do that. But also in terms of the training, uh, ensuring that our people have that opportunity, ensuring that those things are done consistently, so that if there's any certifications that have to be readdressed, uh, that those things are done on a timely basis, so that we make sure that our people have the skill sets they need, uh, to continue to operate and operate safely. So yes, we are in discussions, because without ultimately the human infrastructure, uh, we're not going to be able to operate the port, even with the best equipment and the best facilities, and that's, that's the most important dynamics. And it's a shift, Senator. I mean, uh, the port has operated many, 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 many years in a very different way. Uh, the prioritization of how people got hired, uh, how people got put in certain positions, uh, you know, sometimes it raises your eyebrow. Uh, at the end of the day, the port still moves forward. Uh, we have the opportunity to move forward better. We have the opportunity to ensure that we have more capable, uh, individuals coming in that, that are there for the growth process. I mean, you know, you see the most recent issue where people were hired that didn't meet the minimum hiring requirements. Those are the type of things we need to address to ensure that when people come through the door, you know, they have the skill sets available. So, at the end of the day, I agree with you. And, and the infusion of new blood into the port, I think, is a very good thing. Uh, and I think for the future of the port, and as time goes on, and there are thousands of people that want our jobs. And I know that, because when we have hiring announcements, uh, there's nowhere I go without people asking me, uh, "How do we find out about openings at the port?" There are thousands and thousands of people that want our jobs. And when you look at the pay scale of the port, you can understand why. Um, and we certainly, at the same time, want to ensure that we have that human capacity that we're paying for what we're going to get. Um, so that is something that's very critical, that is a very critical component to everything else that we're asking for in terms of the fiscal infrastructure and the technological improvements that, uh, we are making at the port right now.
I, I don't have any other questions, gentlemen? Do you? None? Okay. Do you have any closing remarks?
I'm going to stop.
Um, there being no further questions, um, the committee, um, the committee will, um, now adjourn, um, this hearing, and Bill 283-32 is, has been duly heard, and the time now is 3:50. Thank you very much.